Gentlemen.
Good evening.
Welcome to the Longmont Area Chamber of Commerce's 2017 City Council Debate. We appreciate you taking time out of your busy schedules to be here with us tonight. My name is Rick Countess, and I'm the chairperson for the Chamber's Public Policy Committee. Our policy committee members are glad you are here as we discuss how Longmont will move forward. This is an interesting time to be a Longmont resident, as we have significant changes happening in our community. Before we begin, I would like to mention that Silvana Monroe is providing live Spanish translation of this year's discussion. If you prefer to hear tonight's event in Spanish, headsets are available at the chamber tables in the lobby area. In a moment, we will begin with the National Anthem. But first, would like us to take a moment of silence to remember those impacted by the tragedy in Las Vegas. Please. Thank you. Our thoughts and prayers are with those in Las Vegas. Now, I would like you to ask, I would like to ask you to join me in welcoming Silver Creek High School Principal Eric Benesbain. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to Silver Creek High School for tonight's City Council debates, featuring our local politicians. And while I won't be announcing my candidacy this evening, I want to tell you that politics of the high school is a rough environment as well. That being said, I'd like to pay some special tribute and thanks to our students who have been instrumental in hosting tonight's event. Members of our own Silver Creek Leadership Academy running the sound, as well as the live streaming that we have here tonight. If you go to our website, we'll have it up and live streaming there, including, of course, with the local TV channel, A. With that, as part of the Silver Creek Leadership Academy, our students are very active and involved throughout the community of Longmont, and without the support of our Chamber of Commerce, without the support of our City Council, and many nonprofit organizations, and also businesses within the area. We wouldn't have this enriching experience for our kids, so I'd like to thank all of our business owners, our nonprofit delegates that are here this evening, and especially, let's give a round of applause to our kids. Being in the business of celebrating kids, it's with great pleasure and great honor that I get to introduce our choir this evening, our award-winning Chamber Singers Group, under the direction of Mr. Jeremy Skelton, singing the Star-Sangled Banner. Ladies and gentlemen, won't you please rise?
Thank you, Silver Creek Chamber Singers. Good evening, I'm Michelle Britsby with the Mama Mae's Bakery and the 2017 Chair of the Board of Directors for the Longmont Area Chamber of Commerce. We are pleased to have you join us this evening. We would like to especially thank our sponsors and partners Comcast, Community Solutions, Times Call, Silver Creek High School, The Longmont Channel, The Latino Chamber of Commerce. And a special thank you to John Lehman of Comcast, Carrie Adams with Silver Creek Leadership Academy, and the Chamber's Public Policy Members. This event would also not be possible without the continued support of the Chamber's many volunteers for the Chamber's Ambassador's Group. Next, I would like to introduce our moderator. Gloria Neal is an award-winning multimedia journalist whose versatility in the community on television and radio, as well as in print, has made her a much sought-after talent. She was a former news anchor for CBS 46 in Atlanta. In 2016, she was named by one of Atlanta's Top 100 Influential Women by the Atlanta Business League, and was selected to join the National Coalition of 100 Black Women of the Metro Atlanta. She continues to emcee events in Atlanta, but she has returned to her beloved Colorado, where she continues to tell stories that impact lives here in Colorado. Please help me welcome Gloria Neal.
Good evening, everyone. Y'all are really quiet. Good evening.
Good evening.
Yes, this is a very, very important event this evening, as well as the issues are real important to everyone near me. Yeah, that's good, 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 good. It is indeed a good thing to be back home. If you've ever left your home and longed to come back. For those of you who may not know, prior to me being the morning news anchor at CBS 46 in Atlanta, Georgia, I was a part of the CBS 4 news team here in Denver, Colorado, here in Colorado. So, that is, that is really kind of where my origin started from, there, K O A, with Dave Logan and Scott Hastings. And so, I'm sure between this crowd, y'all watch TV and it's the radio, correct?
Yeah.
Good, good. So, it's good to be back home. Thank you for that warm welcome. So, delighted to be here and delighted to have this as really a cornerstone. And so many people are talking about politics these days, and I want so many of you to, actually, all of you, but to understand, it is such a good thing to be able to vote, even when it's raining outside, and even when it's hard for people to get to where they're going. I am so glad to see all of your faces here tonight, because this definitely is important. It not just affects your area, really, in many ways, it affects the entire state. So, the first thing we will do is welcome the candidates for War II, and that will be Marsha Martin and Jeff Moore. And I cannot know if Marsha is here yet, hopefully she has arrived. Let's hope she has. Yes, it's a wonderful thing. So, please welcome them. Welcome, 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 welcome. I still got a proof for you. We know it's raining pretty bad out there, so it's good to see you. Yeah, so... Well, good. Marsha Martin, and where is Jeff Moore? Jeff Moore, there you are. Now, what I'll do is I will review the rules and the order of the debate, so that everyone in the audience and the candidates, everybody, is on the same page, agree? So, timing, of course, will be kept, and it will be strict, so each candidate will have equal time, and then we'll move on to the next question, regardless of whether the candidate has completed that answer. Now, of course, I will be ruthless, you know, if I see you wrapping it up, then that would be a good thing. If I see you giving a dissertation and the red light is going off, then that would turn it to cruelly. So, our timers this evening are Karen Hips, please raise your hand, and Maddie LaBoire. Now, for the audience, you all. Animation is wonderful, but I also want the respect for the candidates, the attendees, that's very important, and turn off those cell phones if you have not already done so, or at least put them on, mute, or vibrate. And please refrain from any audible disturbances. Our event today will move quickly, and your cooperation and support is certainly necessary and appreciated. Final note for you, the audience may applaud at the end of each segment, but please refrain from applauding or other audible demonstrations after an individual has given their entire answer. Of course, this will detract, if in fact you do it, from the candidates' answers, so we just want to make sure that the candidates are heard. Also, candidates, please pay attention to the lights in front of the stage. You see those light bulbs there? The green light will be lit as you begin speaking. When the yellow light comes on, that means you have 15 seconds to complete your answer. Of course, the red light means you must stop, honey, that's a, here's a sign. So, each of you will have a minute and a half for an introductory statement. At the end of the segment, you will have one minute for closing remarks. Now, I'll ask the questions, you'll have one minute to respond, and then we will rotate the questions, so each candidate can be first, depending on which category we're in. The candidate answering the question first will also be given 30 seconds after the other candidate has responded, to give a rebuttal, and that will be at my discretion, but those 30 seconds, of course, will be yours, if in fact you decide to give a rebuttal, to either clarify or to rebut something that was said. Now, if time permits, then I will read the question from the audience, the same time rules, of course, there will apply as well. And then there will also be a lightning round, meaning you will get 15 seconds to answer those questions, and of course, they will not be anything that requires longer than 15 seconds, I don't know what you think I'm going to ask to solve, to answer the question. But reiterating the timing at the beginning of the first lightning round question, again, I'll do that, and so, I think at this point, I want to, the first opening statement, Jeff, you'll get that, and then later, Marsha, and then you'll have the first closing statement, Jeff. So, it's kind of alternate, going back and forth, okay? So, I'll call your name, so you will know, you just won't be sitting there looking crazy, if in fact you are confused, okay? So, here is the first question. Oh, I'm sorry, you're absolutely right. I want, look, I'm jumping ahead, apparently. So, let's give you the opening statements first, and then I will actually have you give your response to the first question. So, without further ado, let's go ahead, and Jeff, you'll have the floor for your opening statement.
Okay, thank you. Oh, I'm ready for Jeff Moore, running for City Council for your War II representative. Currently, I'm a representative, and I want to continue to be your representative. So, I'm asking for your vote today. My wife, Ingrid, and I moved to Longmont in 1995, and I, and we've grown to love this city. Now retired from my engineering profession, and now have time to give back to my community.
Look at my close-up picture, Jeff, so you can point it at you. Right on.
So, I just, I want to continue to give back to my community. My campaign slogan is "Creating Tomorrow Today," that's my guiding principle. I believe decisions made today lay the groundwork for the future. Policy set by council impacted our community for generations to come, and I don't take that responsibility right there. My votes are not based on political ideology. I want to continue to move Longmont forward as your council representative. My experience and qualifications for my first term on council gave me a solid base to serve, to continue serving. I served on several boards representing Longmont, and I gained the broad perspective that I could put to use immediately. The quality of life we experience in Longmont did not happen by accident. Our infrastructure suffered at the foresight of being encouraged to build infrastructure to support our citizens. Council needs to continue this tradition. We're literally creating tomorrow today.
All right. Thank you so much. Jeff Moore, ladies and gentlemen. Marsha?
Hello, everyone. Thank you for coming. I especially thank the Chamber of Commerce for hosting this event, and the student helpers for their volunteerism. I'm running for City Council because I love Longmont. It's my chosen home, and it's coming to a crossroads. The existing council majority has us in the wrong lane. We need to change lanes and get back on track. Here's the problem. Council has been too deferential to business and let things get out of control. On South Side traffic, Longmont needs to do its own pre-permitting traffic studies to stop messes like the Ken Pratt congestion. On oil and gas development, my opponent believes that nothing will stop the oil and gas industry from monetizing all the fossil fuel in Colorado. I'm for protecting Longmont any way we can. On affordable housing, my opponent thinks the market will take care of Longmont's housing shortage, all by itself, as the invisible hand. The data shows otherwise, predicts otherwise. Longmont must aggressively protect its economic diversity. When elected to Longmont City Council, I pledge to look for the future. I will do what's right, fight for our city, and champion equal opportunity and equal protection for all of us.
Thank you. And now, we will start with the questions. The first question, we'll go to Marsha as the fluctuating. And Marsha, I will ask, given the, given the market fluctuations, what would be a sustainable policy for affordable housing? Because there has been so much, not just really in the Longmont area, but throughout the state, talking about affordable housing. What would you call or consider a sustainable policy in regards to affordable housing?
I think Longmont, two mayors ago, had an excellent policy that required that when new multiple permits, multiple family permits were granted, that a certain percentage, it was 10%, I think that might not be enough now, had to be affordable housing. And there was something wrong with that policy, because it allowed builders to pay cash in lieu of doing that, and that had the effect of helping developers building market properties to compete with each other, because that cash in lieu just was used to make things better, make their own stuff better. So, I think we should return to that policy, but not allow cash in lieu.
All right. Thank you, Marsha. Jeff, what do you say?
The inclusion zoning policies, actually, the market conditions were, the overall cost of housing for everybody goes up. Now, in places like Boulder, or Portland, or Seattle, those policies work because the value of the property is so much higher. Land is expensive here, but it's out of sight in most communities. The only studies that have really been done have been on the East and West Coast, and where it shows that it works is like San Francisco or Washington DC. It's really never been proven to work in Longmont, and I would not support inclusion or zoning. Council has put together a package of incentives, and we can work with developers through a public-private partnership to use funding we put into our Affordable Housing Fund to provide incentives, to fee waivers, things, and height and density bonuses to get affordable housing, to strap the cost of affordable housing on the cost of new development is just not right.
Thank you, candidates. We will move on to question two, and this will be... So, Jeff, we'll start with you first. Mr. Moore, what is your philosophy on influencing large companies to locate or relocate to Longmont, and does this philosophy extend to small companies? What would you do to attract them and to keep them, and that kind of ties into affordable housing as well?
The most recent example of this is this Smugglers Plan. We provided down incentives in order to locate here that we would not have had, those, that those future taxes had we not provided incentives. Communities, in my opinion, do go overboard at times on providing those incentives. Whatever we provide has to be reasonable and come back to the city in revenues in a relative short time. The smaller employers are, it should be kind of tied to how many jobs you get out of a new company coming to Longmont. Smugglers with 500 employees was a big employer. Smaller employers, I believe, we could provide different kinds of incentives or tax cuts, whatever it takes to make sure we can continue to diversify our employment base.
All right, thank you. Let me do a follow-up with you, Jeff, on that, because if you talk about too many incentives, it sounds like you're saying too many incentives are given upfront, and companies, the time horizon for that city to poop it is not sufficient. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, that's correct. I mean, we're going to be seeing improved revenues within the first five years from the Smugglers Plan, so it's not like we're going to have to wait 20 years to see those revenues come back to the city.
Okay. Marsha, what's your philosophy on this particular challenge, if you will? You've got large companies talking about relocating to Longmont, and does this philosophy extend to small companies as well?
I actually think it's the opposite. Longmont City Council has given a lot of incentives with too few requirements, and we don't have space in this format to explain that, but just think about the village at Twin Peaks as an example of too many incentives. And if you don't know that, look it up online or watch for my op-ed. In fact, what we need to do, since Longmont is the land of opportunity right now in Boulder County, is we need to nurture our startups more, and wait for the big companies to realize that this is where they have to come, and get them to do things for Longmont. And if I'm elected to City Council, I will use my considerable connections among the entrepreneurial community to start doing a mentoring program sponsored by City Council for the entrepreneurial community in Longmont, which is already strongly vibrant, but could use our help.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Ms. Martin. Let me, let me do a quick follow-up on that with you. You said, "Get them to do things for Longmont." You're talking about the bigger companies, and if so, what kind of things do you have in mind?
I think that we can be creative about that, but I think, for example, that improving traffic flow, producing parks and, you know, things that enhance community, and also providing enrichment programs for the community.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Thank you. Now, here's a lightning round, which means you'll only have 15 seconds to respond, and in this particular category, I can start in any order. So, I'll start with Mr. Moore. Do you support this year's public safety tax?
I do support the public safety tax. We've increased in population about 10%, but we really haven't supported that with additional resources in public safety, police officers, 911 dispatchers, detectives, firefighters, and that's what that tax is going to go to.
Thank you so much. Ms. Martin, do you support the public safety tax?
Absolutely, I do. It's just about right, it's proportionate to the growth in population. What I don't support is the militarization of the police force.
Thank you, vote. Appreciate it. Question number four. What are the three biggest quality-of-life challenges facing Longmont? We'll start with you, Ms. Martin.
I think that the quality of life in terms of congestion is a big problem, traffic congestion. We have a process problem in this, in Longmont, where the city has been accepting the traffic studies that the developers, when they're applying for permits, provide. How many of you think that the developers are going to provide a study that says, "Oh, yeah, we're going to really mess up traffic, and you're either going to have to tax us extra to pay for the new roads, or you're going to just have to suck it up and build the new roads yourselves?" No, we need to do those traffic studies, and we need, you know, there's good simulation software out there to do it, and there's no reason why the city planning board cannot do that for themselves, and they should. They hurt my board by not.
Thank you so very much. Appreciate it. Jeff, what are the three biggest quality-of-life challenges facing Longmont?
Well, I think that we're, we're facing a housing affordability crisis at all, at all levels of our population, and working through that's going to take some time. We're, we need to make sure we provide employment that can support wider diversity of jobs that can actually afford those housing, that housing. We are going to be replacing a lot of infrastructure in the next few years. Our sewer and water systems have aged to the point where we're going to be replacing them on a long-term basis. And congestion in traffic is always on people's minds. However, thinking that traffic studies done by a developer are not adequate or appropriate, why would a developer come here and think that, "I'm going to mess up your town"? They hire professional traffic engineers, and our city staff vets those traffic studies and approves them. If they don't, if they don't meet merit, they don't get through. So, whatever my opponent says about that is totally false.
Yeah, you can go ahead and clap if you want. I am ready to, you know, and ask the question, because I think it's warranted. So, when you talk about, so are you vouching for every developer saying that they are totally above board, or not, you know, complaining with individuals? Because certainly you heard complaints, I've heard complaints, I experienced some of it just coming here. When you talk about traffic and congestion, it isn't a figment of our imagination, but it is something that is very important. Progress is important, no question. People got to have places to live. We love developers. You want to have nice places and live nice communities, but you also want to know that it's been given some forethought, so that it does not create more problems. With your answer, are you vouching for all developers saying that they're above board, or are you just saying everything that your candidate or your opponent has said is not above board?
Is that correct, Mom?
Yeah, yes, yes.
Okay, well, what I'm saying is that when a developer brings a new development to Longmont, they have to meet certain criteria, and if they meet those criteria, the city staff vets that. What we're seeing a lot of congestion around today is just an absolute increase in population on roads that were built 30 years ago. It's not necessarily anything, it's new development, it's an artifact of what's happened over the past, and how much more population is increased.
Okay, and I'm going to give you 30 seconds to rebuttal. You go ahead.
Yes, I've been canvassing door-to-door on the South Side in neighborhoods between Hoover and Pike Road and Plateau Road, and I hear from about one citizen out of three, they say, "Since those new apartment buildings came in, I can't get out of this subdivision. I can't get to work on time, I cannot leave at a natural time for my job schedule. Something went wrong." Those people say something went wrong, and something did.
Thank you, both. I appreciate it. I wish I had more time to read that. Here's another lightning round question. 15 seconds to answer, candidates. Should we sell marijuana within city limits? Marsha?
Yes, what's legal in Colorado should be legal in Longmont, and we could use the tax revenue.
Jeff?
Well, yeah, I would take, it's going to pass. We're here, it's on second reading, it's in two weeks, so, you know, we're going to have marijuana legalized in Longmont, and my vote against this has been because they haven't typed an extra sales tax to it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, vote. Question number four. In 2004, Longmont voted to tax themselves to build on the Fast Track Rails project, including a line to Longmont by 2014. Thus far, I'll have to tell y'all, Longmont voters have paid over $44 million to RTD, and have not received rail service nor benefit from multiple RTD projects. Now, RTD says they won't build it now until 2040, or after. Would you support exploring whether Longmont has legal standing to bring a lawsuit to RTD over the failure to deliver, or do you believe that there is another solution? I'll start with you first, Jeff.
Thank you. Well, the 2040 number is definitely off the table right now. That was at Community Solutions a couple weeks ago, I was at that meeting, and RTD said Longmont's getting out getting a rail in 2040, period. Whether or not we should sue them is another question that, oh, we can throw good money after bad. I don't think that's really a long-term solution. What we need to do is make sure that we are getting at least decent mass transit service. Two bus lines in Longmont is not adequate. Getting to Boulder where it can get better service would be an option which we're working on right now, is BRT on 119. And just the fact that if we continue to gripe about RTD, that's fine, but it doesn't mean it's going to come here. They went through a process of, instead of building out the backbone, they got sidetracked with shiny projects along the way. they got sidetracked with shiny projects along the way in the south side of Denver, and we didn't get the funding that we should have gotten up in the northwest. As that being said, rail service to Longmont is also being explored as a morning and night service. So that's something we're gonna get some data on soon. So maybe we will get some reduced service here in the near future. And that would be something we should be supporting as well as full rail service.
This is about forty miles that needs to be built out, if I understand it, for RTD. Marcia, talk about this a little bit. What do you think? Do you think that there should be a lawsuit, or do you think that there is another solution to this challenge? After all, you all voted for it, just like the rest of the state passed it, but whether it's in due circumstances, or is a lawsuit going to be better than good money after bad, after your opponents have said?
I am sick and tired of the placidity of Longmont City Council in the face of powerful entities, whether it is the oil and gas industry, whether it's RTD, or whether it's the real estate industry. We need to start questioning, we need to start pushing, and we need to get what we are entitled to. And anybody who says that one or two bus lines north and south is gonna make any difference to Longmont's economy does not understand the modern work environment. We don't need as much a huge bus going south in the morning and north at night. What we need is high-frequency transportation all day that doesn't pollute and that doesn't involve people driving and getting stuck on the highway. That would benefit both the Denver businesses and the Longmont residents, and that's what we need. Nobody commutes old-style anymore. And if we have to seek other ways, yes, we should pursue a lawsuit. We should also pursue some kind of a partnership with another transit authority, like perhaps Fort Collins. Um, we're already making a bus line from Fort Collins to Longmont. Maybe they're an active company, they might do something with us just to pull the tail of RTD. I'd like to pull the tail of RTD.
Thank you. Now, I have a question from the audience, and I will start out first with Marcia. You have thirty seconds to answer the question. Should Longmont become a sanctuary city?
Longmont, for all intents and purposes, is a sanctuary city. We might as well say so. But Longmont's asset is the community that all the people of Longmont feel with one another, and they can't take that away from us, no matter what. We protect our own, and we will continue to do so.
Thank you. Should Longmont become a sanctuary city, Jeff?
Well, as Marcia said, for all intents and purposes, we are. That was something that came to council. We ratified our current policies to make sure that we understood that this is a policy that we stand by. We made it official. However, to name us a sanctuary city would be not in the benefit for Longmont. I got the phone calls. I heard both sides. I heard that, I heard nasty comments from both sides of the issue. It would have torn Longmont apart.
Thank you so much. Thank you. So, this will actually bring us to the end of the War Two segment with closing statements from the candidates. We will begin with Marcia. Go ahead.
By now, I hope you know what I think and why I'm running. I'd like to take this opportunity to tell you who I am and what I believe. I'm a computer scientist who had a distinguished career. I'm the only woman ever to be named a Storage Tech Fellow. I've held director-level positions in three energy-related corporations and hold patents in storage and smart grid technology. My leadership, knowledge, and competence will make me an effective public servant. I believe in public service. What we do for one another is the most important thing we do. I believe in sustainability. As a city, Longmont respects the land and works together for mutual benefit. That's the definition of community, and I believe in community. Longmont's people accept and care for each other. We're stronger for our diversity. Local government matters more in our daily lives, more than any other. Now, our council must work doubly hard to protect our people and reinforce our compassionate and accepting community.
Thank you so much, Marcia. Thank you. Thank you so much. Jeff?
Thank you. Um, what I think we've all heard tonight is a big difference in opinion on how council should run the city. We are not running the city as a business per se. We are providing the platform on which to build a future of Longmont. How we do that and the policies we set are going to be very important in the future. And as we talked about transportation, well, regardless of what Marcia said, people still commute to Denver, and they will be in as far as the near future can see. We also need to make sure that we do provide transportation solutions. We do need to make sure we do provide sustainable infrastructure. We do need to make sure that we are providing for the future of Longmont. It's irresponsible to think that we can just snap our fingers overnight and fix all our problems. What we need to do is make sure that we are considering all sides of the issues and complete a full, sustainable Longmont solution.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Marcia, and Jeff Moore, ladies and gentlemen, that will conclude our first segment. And that was, of course, with the candidates for War Two. We will have a short intermission, and then we will resume here in a few minutes with the at-large candidates. Thank you.
Oh, my God. You know, we have dog, pack a snack, and a protein shake. Yeah, that's exactly right. Nice to meet you, too.
How's it going, guys?
Good.
Good?
Yeah.
It's all right?
Yeah.
It's good, good seat?
Perfect. No Wi-Fi?
No Wi-Fi? Oh, but you tried SDB, SDB? Oh, so that's how you're...
So we're cruising through your data, and you guys are gonna fill us later? Oh, okay. Way to be prepared.
Hi, Mom! Hi, Mom! I used to watch her in Atlanta. Yeah, I have a, I have a clue. Yeah, okay.
Noon.
What's the only public party tax rates? They like to start with four.
I wonder if I'm getting, do you have like a little clock? Wait, come on. All those things with the new machine? Try the beefcake. Hey, man, I kinda love that one. Huh? Coke? I think it's still okay.
I'm sure it is.
I just don't know where I left it. Which one I left? Got one? This one's got blood.
Hey!
I've come to evaluate.
Ah, well, let me show you something.
What's your phone? You look so good.
Well, that's actually just the phone.
Just the line?
The phone's over your face. So this is, so there's the picture that's actually broadcasting. If I do that, it switches to...
I think they blocked him off on purpose.
It can switch between different views.
Don't you take care of it?
Up to nine. Because this is, this is broadcast, and they can't get this to connect to the internet. Not live, and we're recording with this or streaming live with that. This streams live, too, but their internet won't let us in.
Oh, no, no, they're good. I'm just wondering.
Because they're, of course, all schools are like... We got it to work at one school, and that's because we had to work with their IT department to do it. Here, they wouldn't even talk. Okay. Skyline.
I'm receiving it, too, now, just.
I know. We can get, we can get guest Wi-Fi, but we can't log this in because it has to be able to bring up a screen and approve it. And you can't do that on that. In other words, they don't have an open Wi-Fi.
Well, where is it recording?
It's recording to a guesting card in there, a guesting card. So right now, that's how much is recorded of it. It's like sixty, so I've got about four games every time. So here's the other cool thing. There's my studio view. So that's each of the different areas with a camera, and I can set a new area. And I also can do cool things like that. I can zoom and watch the top right corner. And it will do the zoom for me as well. Watch it. The longer I hold my finger, the slower it goes. So that's what it's recording now. So it's actually, it's like having a live television screen. Switching between the different pictures. And this goes out live if you can get an internet. Right now, I've got a bug in my software that doesn't, we're using the cellphone connection that I'm gonna call the company about tomorrow. My cellphone wouldn't stream live from a physical supply. And it works fine on that, but I can't get it to work. So that's just a regular Facebook app on my phone.
You're using, you're using the phone's...
The phone's LTE connection, so I have no internet here.
No, it's very touchy. It's very stable on internet.
Yeah. Well, this is an LGG six. It's the best camera you can get on a phone. That's a better camera than any that you got. It's a 4K camera. It's got a special DAK recording capability. That's amazing what this thing does. And it costs a hundred bucks. Phones have got insane.
Okay, I'm sorry. Did you, I...
Well, I was gonna say, we just had trouble...
So it wasn't listening to the sound.
Oh, okay. Do you wanna, you can use my password.
We tried that, too.
I wanna do more. Oh, okay. I was gonna say, 'cause I can give you mine at my work as a staff.
This is recording, so we're gonna take this.
I need a wireless.
I, I think we're okay. We're still recording with this. It's not live.
Took it on his speaker or something.
We can do that, and we can all try that. We can plug a mic directly into this.
Mine?
It's got a Ethernet port and a USB port.
Yeah, they do all the football games, sorry. And they try to do all the sporting events. And then they do concerts, graduation.
M-E-V, that's from I can hear them.
Yeah.
Okay. Because like, we're...
Not your first rodeo?
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we are going to resume the program. Our next segment is for at-large candidates. So I want you to help me in welcoming Polly Christensen, Ron Daegos, Kathy Jarrett, Aaron Rodriguez, and Alex Simora. Welcome to all the candidates. I went over earlier and made sure that they pulled those microphones up close so that you all can hear them. However, if there ever comes a member where you cannot hear, please do not be bashful. Let me know. Because it is so easy to hear, 'cause I'm up here with them as opposed to you out in the audience. It's very important that you get the answers to the questions being asked. I'm gonna go over the rules, candidates. I want you to pay attention to those three lights that are right there in front of the stage. The green light will be lit as you begin. When the yellow light comes on, that means you have fifteen seconds to complete your answer. When the red light comes on, honey, you get the hook. There you are. It is done. Of course, I don't do it with, you know, reckless ban. And I see you coming to an end, I'll certainly give you that opportunity. Now, each of you will have a minute for an introductory statement. At the end of the segment, you will have one minute for closing remarks. I will also ask the questions, and you will be given one minute to respond, as I stated. We will rotate the questions so that each candidate has the opportunity to answer the question first. The candidate answering the question first will also be given thirty seconds to respond. Also, it will be at my discretion to give those thirty seconds to a candidate to clarify a statement or to respond to another candidate's remarks. Now, to time permits, I will read a question from the audience. And of course, the same rules will apply, and thirty-second rebuttals will begin at my choosing. There will also be lightning round questions, and you will be given fifteen seconds each to answer those questions. And I'll reiterate the timing at the beginning of each of those questions so people know. So, opening statements will go in this order. That's Polly Christensen, Ron Daegos, Kathy Jarrett, Aaron Rodriguez, and Alex Simora. Okay? So, thank you so very much. Now, I want to give a student an opportunity to ask this first question. And that student is Kimmy Fawn. She is a senior, and she's pretty impressive. I spent some time talking to her. She was talking about wanting to go into things that deal with the environment. And certainly, we know those things are extremely important. She is that senior here at Silver Creek High School, and she will be asking the first question to Polly Christensen when she comes up. So ladies and gentlemen, please welcome Kimmy Fawn. Oh, you know, I did that again. Who is it with me in these opening statements, right? It's like, don't give me the appetizer or the hors d'oeuvre. Can we just get to the meat? So, if that makes sense, let me back up, Kimmy.
No problem.
Don't do this at home, honey. You might get hurt. Let's get to the opening statements. How about that?
We're done.
Yeah.
Better is losing, my Mark.
No, you are not. It is me.
Okay. Hello, my name is Polly Christensen. I've been your city council member-at-large for the last four years. Uh, and I would like to, I'm asking for your vote to reelect me to continue to serve you and be your representative. I said I'd work to develop more and better jobs, better educational opportunities for everyone, continue to maintain our fine city infrastructure and services, work for more housing that is affordable for the median Longmont individual pre-tax salary of $29,000, according to the U.S. Census. I said I would uphold all residents' civil rights. I would continue to support fast tracks coming to Longmont. I would support medical marijuana inside the limits of Longmont and work to bring Longmont into the 21st century with a sustainability plan to ensure our children and grandchildren receive the same beautiful worldly all-inherited. I've made progress on every single issue I said I would and more. Some of these gains have been modest, but I've learned the hard way how long and tedious the process often must be, to be fair. None of these gains have been me acting alone. None of these gains have been me acting alone.
Thank you, Polly. Thank you so very much. Polly Christensen. Next is Ron Daigus.
In my daily two-mile walk around guardmakers, I happened upon a pothole. I engaged this pothole in a discussion, whereupon I asked him about his political persuasion. I said, "Are you a Democratic, pothole? Are you a Republican, pothole? Are you an independent, pothole?" The pothole punk, he said, "Ron, I'm a damn pothole, and I just want to be repaired." I'm a non... I'm a communitarian, and I really want to do what's in the best interest of the community. I think it means to be a nonpartisan. It means being a good leader. And sometimes, being a good leader is like being a fine baker. It's using good ingredients. These ingredients are the ability to see the big picture, to compromise when necessary, to see the other's point of view, to work towards the greater common good, to work the issue and to rule the ball down the field. I thank you for your consideration, and I ask for your vote and support.
Ladies and gentlemen, Ron Daigus. Next, we have Kathy Jarrett.
Hello, I am Kathy Jarrett, and Longmont has been my home since I chose to move here in nineteen seventy-one. I've seen many changes in the past forty-six years. We're blessed to live in a beautiful and diverse city. Those who came before us left a legacy which I would like to preserve and build upon as we go forward into the future. For most of my career, I've been a special education teacher in the St. Green Valley School District. I'm also one of the founders of Twin Peaks Charter Academy, the first charter school in this district. Over the years, I've been a volunteer in many different capacities, including the Rock Mountain Rescue Group. I want to be part of a city government that understands that its basic duty is to protect the rights of the people so that they can live their lives responsibly in a peaceful community where justice is honored and the laws are applied equally to all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Aaron Rodriguez.
Thank you. Hello, friends. Thank you very much to the Longmont Chamber of Commerce for having us tonight. I believe that I am probably the relative newcomer to this group that you'll be hearing from us tonight, so let me give you a little bit of background about me. I'm a native of Longmont. I was born and raised here in nineteen eighty-three Longmont United Hospital. I went through our public school system, which was wonderful. Burlington Elementary, Sunset Middle School, and then I graduated from Longmont High School in two thousand and one. I am a real estate appraiser. I'm a self-employed real estate appraiser here in the city of Longmont who specializes in well dermer and Boulder counties. So I'm accurately aware of what's going on in the marketplace as far as real estate is concerned. You know what? I have a little bit of experience. I've been on the Arts Longmont Board of Directors for a few years. I'm currently Secretary and Treasurer. I'm the outreach inclusion team leader for the Boulder County Democratic Party, as well as a current Planning and Zoning Commissioner. As a native, I promise to listen to all of your ideas first before I make a decision on City Council. So in two thousand and seventeen, roll with Rodriguez.
And last but certainly not least, Alex Simora.
Thank you. I'm Alex Simora, obviously candidate for City Applied. My wife and children, I have lived in Longmont for twenty-four years. I've been in Boulder County for fifty years. Since nineteen ninety-nine, I've been engaged within the community, serving on fifteen boards and commissions. And I also served on City Council from two thousand and nine to two thousand and thirteen. So, my experience within the community spans the private, public, and nonprofit worlds, which gives me a unique perspective when dealing with the issues that come before council. Now, as a businessman, I'm results-driven, and I'm ready to deliver results by listening to what the community has to say, by collaborating with fellow council members and city staff, and by delivering solutions that will yield the best results for the community long-term. I ask for your support and your vote in this upcoming election. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, it'll probably feel like you know her. Please welcome to the stage Kimmy Fong, who is going to ask the first question to the candidates.
Hi, everyone. I'm here tonight to represent the St. Green Valley School District students with my question for the candidates. The city of Longmont is growing. There are more homes being built and even more people moving into them. The growth impacts schools too. How will you, as a City Council member, work to accommodate the growth? And what, if any, is your role as a City Council member in working with the school district?
And Polly will start with you.
Could you repeat that again? I'm sorry. It's a good question.
How will you, as a City Council member, work to accommodate the growth? And what, if any, is your role as a City Council member in working with the school district?
That's a good question. I find that many of the schools, many of the developers and the school, the way that the schools account for when they're going to be overloaded, they're already overloaded by the time development gets built. And that really upsets me because, if you're a teacher and you have an extra number of kids, that's a lot. You know, it's just not fair to our kids. So, I would love to be able to find a way to work better with the school board so that we actually get the buildings we need instead of having to bog down things as soon as it's by development. Our... We, many of the people when I am walking around are disturbed by the amount of development coming on. We'd all like to keep Longmont a cozy little town, but it's now ninety-five thousand people. It's really shocking. Almost ninety-six thousand.
Time. Time. Thank you, Polly. Appreciate it. Thank you so much. Ladies and gentlemen, give Kimmy another round of applause. Ron, I'll repeat the question again. The city of Longmont's growing. There are more homes being built and even more people moving into those homes. The growth impacts schools as well, as you heard Kimmy say. How will you, as a council member, work to accommodate the growth? And what, if any, role as a City Council member in working with the school district? How would you do that?
The planning process is not just a process that impacts the city or the city product, but really impacts the entire community. That means that we have to be good stewards. We have to be good communicators, not only with the school district, but also those other impacts that we have on the carrying capacity of our community. I think we have to be thoughtful in our approach. I think we must insist that growth, I mean, new growth, pays its own way. So that if there are impacts for the school district and to other things, like transportation and the transportation corridors, we need to look at that. We have to be thoughtful in our approach. But by and large, I think this has been a great city to raise a family, to raise grandchildren. And I would hate to see us become stratified so that we became another Boulder. So only those that got here at a certain period in time can live in Longmont. I think it ought to be open to everyone, which means that we have to be thoughtful on our approach, development. And that means, thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. Thank you. I appreciate your answer, Ron. And so we'll move on now to Kathy. And Polly brings up a good point about the overcrowding already taking place by the time people are working on a solution to prevent overcrowding. As a City Council member, in fact, that happens, how will you work to accommodate, or I should say, as a City Council member, how will you work to accommodate the growth? And if you are working with the school districts when you start talking about overcrowding, how will you really try to reconcile all of those so that it is not a challenge that we're already seeing?
Hey, thank you. I've been a school teacher for over two decades, so I've seen from the inside. I would like to see some changes, although we, as a City Council, we don't have any control, direct control over the school district. I think we could have some innovation in school scheduling. I think that some year-round schools where the kids would go to school, say, nine weeks and then have three weeks off year-round would be a good system because then the kids wouldn't forget as much over the summer break. And also, it would allow families to take vacations at other times of the year. Maybe take a trip to New England in the fall instead of everybody taking their vacations at the same time. I'd also like to see school choice by parents in all different kinds of education. Public, charter, private, home, school, whatever the parents would like to choose. I think they're the best to decide for their children. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me just do a quick follow-up. Kathy, you talked about City Council not having, what is it, power or influence?
Direct control over the school.
Direct control. And I'm giving you a chance to clarify that, but would you agree there is some indirect control or some influence that you could bear to affect some of these changes? Could you clarify to the people what you mean when you say "direct control"?
Well, I don't think the City Council can tell the school district where to build a school or when to build a school. But they can encourage the school district to make accommodation for new schools where there's new growth, for sure. And the school district itself has been very active in trying to find or predict how the growth will be and where they will leave their schools.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Ladies and gentlemen, thanks for your participation. So, we will move on now to Aaron. Would you like for me to repeat the question?
No, I'm fine. Thank you.
Good. Go ahead.
All right. As far as the partnership, Kathy is absolutely correct. And that the St. Green Valley School District and the city of Longmont are two separate governmental agencies. As such, we need to work as good neighbors and good partners with the school board and the leadership within the St. Green Valley School District to try to ensure some of these issues get resolved in a proactive fashion. As far as development is concerned, yes, we cannot control where the schools go in, but when the development goes in, let's try to, again, make sure that we are good partners and good neighbors by having safe crossings to our schools. Just yesterday, I was talking to a young family who's very concerned that they cannot get their child to school in a safe manner due to some of the crossings throughout our city when you're crossing roadways, specifically here on the west side, there's a Clover Creek neighborhood, and then children are trying to get to Silver Creek. So I think we need to be proactive in our infrastructure improvements to also supply safe crossings and access to our schools from our developments. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much, Kathy Rodriguez. And then Alex Simora, what do you say? What's going on?
I believe that the city master plan already has locations where development can occur. And I believe that the school district uses that master plan to determine where schools need to be. And during my time on City Council, I know that we worked closely with the school district in helping them with financials and providing whatever assistance they needed to make sure that they had adequate infrastructure and schools. And I think we can continue to do that.
All right. Thank you so very much. This is Alex Simora. Question number two. Now, we hear so much about transparency, transparency, government transparency in our everyday lives. What does that mean? Well, there's been concern over City Council use of personal email addresses to discuss council issues. What do you feel should be done? What is a member's obligation with regard to transparency? And of course, we will start now with Ron.
I think transparency is one of those core foundations. If the folks that are being governed by the folks that are governing don't have faith in the process, it begins to deteriorate. So I think we set the rule purposely to say, by state law, but also by city practice, that everything should be open. We should use the approved means for communication. They provide us with an email that should be used. The press should have access to it. Neighborhood groups should have access to it. And it should be open and above board. I think there's ample opportunity for the public to engage with the council. But when the public at large begins to feel that games are being played, that we're getting close to the edge, and we're not being as above-board and honest as we need to be, I think the process covers, and that would be too bad. So, you know, I feel that you have an obligation as a member to follow the process. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Next, we have Kathy Jarrett. What do you think?
I think that we should follow the sunshine law, and we should use executive sessions at the minimum amount of time that we would need to use them. That most of the business of the city would be done in public, with the public allowed to be at the meetings. As for using private email for public business, I think that absolutely should not be happening.
And so, just so I can make sure, because I can assume that everyone here knows what sort of terminology is, what is a sunshine law?
The sunshine law says that government needs to be open to the people. And if there's a meeting of the school board or City Council or some other government, the state governments, they need to allow the people to attend that meeting without doing it behind closed doors.
So in essence, if City Council is meeting on City Council business, then it should be open to the public?
Correct.
All right. Thank you. Thank you so very much. Kathy Jarrett. Next up, Aaron Rodriguez. What do you say?
Very much. I think that the specific email issue has been a bit overdone in this city. Enough with the emails, if you will. What I would like to talk about as far as transparency is concerned is the availability of council for redress by the public. Oftentimes, public invited to be heard, people don't understand that we cannot answer back as a City Council or as Planning and Zoning Commissioner, or various meetings run that way. So I propose that there is more time and more events where City Councilors are made available to have one-on-one or even town hall-style interactions. As well as, I myself pledge to walk the neighborhoods at least once per month, if elected, to talk to folks door-to-door. And that's the kind of transparency I truly want to see at the City Council.
All right. Thank you so very much. And next, we have Alex Simora.
Well, there's only one definition of the word transparency. And if you look it up, it just has to be open. And as on City Council, we are always accessible to the people. They can email us, they can call us, and they can set up meetings with us if they so choose. So being transparent is the rule of the day. And that's what the charter calls for, and that's what we're supposed to do. So they have, the public has access to our emails. They have access to our personal phones as well as our city phones. And there's no limit as to how many times they can contact us.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, so very much. So what was I saying, having all this recording? You know somebody's going to play a match for me. So, here is what we are going to do.
Not Polly.
Oh, Polly. I knew that. Polly. Thank you so very much. Polly's like, "No, I'm ready." Please, go ahead. My mistake.
Okay. I voted for the sunshine law when it was created a long, long time ago. And I still believe that that is the way things should happen. We try, as a city and as individuals, to be transparent all the time. There are times when an issue kind of bubbles up so that not all of the things are always available to the news in a manner that allows them to write their story in time. But that's not because we're trying to not be transparent. And the case that recently came out in which one council member basically called out another council member was a conviction when he contacted that council member. That happens frequently when they contact, somehow get ahold of your private email and contact you that way. And rather than just be, you know, rude, this council member wrote back, "Please contact the city." It's out of my field. So, anyway, we all started.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Ladies and gentlemen, the two of you are on the call. So here is a lightning round question. Fifteen seconds to answer, and this will kind of give you a little bit of an idea of who each candidate is. And I can pick any order, since I, you know, this is Polly. I did not mean to do that. I'm going to start with Polly. Ooh, what childhood hero?
Probably Martin Luther.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. And Ron Daigus, who was your childhood hero?
Allen Breck. I read Kidnap about twenty times.
All right. Aaron Rodriguez, who was your childhood... Who was your childhood hero?
Well, I'm a big lover of sci-fi and space.
Well, I'm a big lover of sci-fi and space, so I'm gonna have to go with the hometown boy of Vance Brandon.
Kathy Jarrett, who was your childhood hero?
I think Callan Keller was one of my childhood heroes, because she overcame, suffered a lot of disabilities and became a wonderful person and inspired many.
Alright, and Alex Semorin, who was your childhood hero?
I would have to say my father, for setting the great example for me that he did in terms of work ethic and discipline.
Alright, thank you ladies and gentlemen. Thank you very much. Give them a round of applause. Here is a question that is going to just keep coming up and is not going to go away, and rightfully so. Back in 2004, Longmont voted to tax themselves to build out FastTrax. Remember that rail project? That rail project. It includes the line, Longmont, it's supposed to be done in 2014. So far, voters have paid over $44 million to RTD and have not received that rental service nor benefit from the multiple RTD projects. RTD now says they will not build until 2040 or after, and of course, one of the candidates in a previous, that came up here, basically said, that's not even going to happen now. So if elected, what will you do to bring that Northwest Rail Line, the B-line, if you will, to Longmont and do it soon? And please be specific and tell us how you would work to handle the specific challenges and just what you would do. So we will start out with Kathy.
Okay, I don't really think that building a rail line to Longmont was such a great idea in the first place, because if we have to go from Longmont to Boulder and then to Denver, I think it would take more time, even on a fast rail, than it would to just take the bus from Longmont to Denver, which I've done many times when I've gone to the state Capitol to testify on a bill or something. So I'm not real excited about that. I think also, I added more trains going through Longmont from First Avenue all the way to Hoover will add to the congestion of traffic, because cars will have to wait for the train to go by. So I think it would be much better for them to give us better bus service, more bus service, maybe to Denver, more frequently. Or if we did have light rail, I think down I-25 makes a lot more sense than from Longmont to Boulder to Denver.
Okay, I'm gonna do a quick follow-up. Kathy, let me ask you, so you think that bus service will reduce the congestion and light rail will, or excuse me, yeah, bus service will reduce it and light rail will increase it?
I think light rail trains, if we had them running every 15 minutes across all the intersections between Main Street and Hoover, would make the cars have to wait longer. And so I can guess that would increase congestion in the south part of the city. If we had bus service to Denver, I think it'd be more efficient to go straight down I-25 in a bus than to take light rail from Longmont to Boulder and then on to Denver.
So in other words, not stop off in Boulder and then on to Denver, it would just be from Longmont to Denver?
We would increase the distance by maybe 20 miles or so. So if you increase the distance, it's gonna increase the time, even if the rails are going faster.
Right, no, no, I understand that. I just wanted to make sure what, so everyone understands the trajectory you are saying as opposed to going from Longmont to Boulder to Denver, you would just go from Longmont to Denver?
Correct. And if we did have light rail, I think down I-25 makes more sense than going the long way around to Boulder.
Thank you, thank you. Next up is Erin Rodriguez. Ladies and gentlemen, Erin, what do you say?
Well, I have a two-pronged strategy for this particular issue. The first thing is that our local RTD director, as well as our council representative, should continue to put pressure on the other RTD directors that make and vote on these decisions. The other part would be to continue to apply pressure to those RTD directors that if they are not going to be following through on their promises of rail, that we should have better bus service. Bus service, and we should be analyzing our routes to make them more efficient, something more, maybe possibly even more of like concentric circles, because our city is built out wonderfully in somewhat of a grid shape. And so if we continue to push either, to push both issues, we should get something good out of it at some point or another. If not, they'll still know that we are not happy with what we've been given.
Alright, and so, let me follow up with you, Erin. So are you saying, are you in support of suing RTD, or are you just in support of applying pressure, and what kind of pressure?
I'm not in support of suing RTD. I believe we're a bit too litigious as a society in general. What I am for, though, is placing direct pressure, and sometimes, because RTD directors are elected, that could come in the form of political pressure. Maybe not from the city council standpoint, but definitely from our residents and activists in our area.
Thank you so very much. I appreciate it. Alex Semorin, what do you say?
I served for a while on the Citizens Advisory Committee for RTD. And that was when everybody was excited originally about getting a train to Longmont. And it's a misnomer to call it FastTrax, I think it's pretty much a slow train that may or may not happen. I think what's happening, in my opinion, is that with the dissatisfaction that we feel about not getting rail, that we're starting to accept the BRT as a replacement. And I think that we should not be doing that. We should be holding IPDs' feet to the fire and make them deliver what they promised, because they were supposed to build it for us first. Originally, it was 2013, then it was 2017, then it was 2022, now 2040, and question mark. So we definitely need to keep the pressure on. Either that, or ask them to give us our money back. Technically, they set aside $17 million for transportation development, or transport-oriented development.
Time. Let me ask you a follow-up, though, Alex, because here is the challenge. Isn't it for any 21st century city to have multimodal transportation? You don't want everything getting on an asphalt road. We need to have a rail system. So instead of throwing out the light rail, the slow rail, because I've seen it, you're like, okay, I'll be able to hit there. But, that being said, you have to take into account if you've ever been on the road and there's an accident and the whole road's closed down, and you see the train go right on by, don't feel let's go at that point. What do you say about a city that is not connected to the rest of the cities via some sort of rail service that gives folks an alternative? That's what we're all supposed to be about.
Well, I'm saying that we should keep the pressure so that we can get the light rail. I think we got the short end of the stick by RTD. And no matter how much pressure we put on it in the past, we haven't gotten the results that we expect. So I think the public, and not just city council, needs to be putting pressure on, writing the directors letters, writing them, you know, opinions in the newspaper, not just the local paper, but the Denver paper, because most of them don't live here.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Next, we have Holly. Holly, please.
I think if there's one thing that probably everybody in this room agrees on, is that we have gotten the short end of the stick from RTD. They intended to provide, they used the excuse of the economic meltdown from 2008 to change, without a vote of the people, the build-out, which was supposed to be even. And now they have simply disregarded the northern part of us. So, they were going to give us a bench and a clock tower. And I said, no, you know, you're gonna give us a little bench with maybe a half thing. Now we are going to have a transit center at the corner of 17 and, I mean, at the corner of Main Street and First, with a designated $17 million. We need to find a partner for that. But since in the last few years, Councilman Peck has worked tirelessly for this.
Time. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you, Holly Christian, ladies and gentlemen. And finally, Ron Gaydos, what do you say, Ron?
I think they're basically in breach of contract. If you were going to buy a new car, and you put your down payment on the car, and you started making payments on the car, and they failed to deliver the car, you wouldn't be happy. I think we as a council, if I get elected, have a fiduciary responsibility to look at civil action. Maybe that means we start impounding our contributions and putting it into trust fund. But they've really given us a pig in the book, folks. And I don't think we can afford to play patty cake with them any longer. I think we have to be serious. We're talking about transportation. We're talking about the impact it has on our community. Our ability to attract new industry, because we're failing in that link, and it's through no fault of our own, because we're all paying the taxes. So somebody's gonna have to come in, and it'd be nice, and you continue to go to cocktail parties, and you continue to slap them on the back, just won't do.
Thank you, Ron Gaydos. Question number four. As a city council member, how would you ensure businesses relocating to Longmont follow through on their promises after incentives are provided to those companies? We will start out with Erin.
Erin, that's a very good question. How do we ensure that these companies follow through on their promises? I find it's much, much easier for those big companies that live here to, at the end of the day, make their own larger scale decisions where they will not follow through necessarily and could possibly just fold at any point. What I prefer us do is make sure that we are fostering a community where we're building up our local businesses. Businesses such as Left Hand Brewery is a good example, going from small to large, small to a big employer. Oscar Blues may have not started directly in Longmont, but Dale started as a kitchen manager here in Longmont, and pursued his dream and built a big business. Sample Supports has done the same thing. And at the end of the day, I want a sticker on my card that says Sample Supports, or Left Hand, or Oscar Blues, before it says Smugglers or AstraZeneca.
Alright, thank you, Ron. You go. And then Erin. So now we'll go to Alex Semorin.
So when I was on council, and we brought in corporate accounts, we had clawback agreements with them. And the incentives that we gave them were based on the number of employees that they went higher over time. If they did not meet that number, they didn't get the incentives that we had negotiated with them. And I think that's a good way of doing it, because we do need small and big business. Small businesses are great, they hire local people, but big businesses bring the extra revenue that the city needs as well, and they pay a lot higher property taxes.
Thank you, Alex Semorin. Holly, what do you say about that question?
I agree with both, Erin and Alex. I think that we need to have them, we do have clawback agreements with these businesses. I'm not sure that we actually do hold them accountable, and that's something we need to be sure that we do, because the truth is, of course, we do need diversity in business. We need those big businesses, but we also need much, much, we need to support our small businesses, because they provide the most jobs and they're the most stable, and they're usually from here. So the money stays here and benefits all of us. We need to be sure that we enforce those clawback agreements, because otherwise, we are giving things away and people can fall off and leave and go do the same thing to another, another community. So, that's my solution.
Alright, Holly Christians and ladies and gentlemen, thank you. And then finally, Ron, what do you say? How would you ensure businesses relocating to Longmont follow through on those incentives that they're promising?
Well, I guess I could question the notion or the premise that we should even be doing incentives anymore. I look at this community and all the positive things we have going for us. It's a great location in Longmont. If you're a professor at CU, you take an understanding that you're gonna take $10,000 or $15,000 less to live in Boulder, for the privilege of living in Boulder. I think we need to start telling businesses, we're going shopping, we're going to determine the businesses we want in our community. We are going to become the economic drivers. I think we've got partnerships that we can work with, with the Economic Development Council, with the Chamber and whatnot. But I think as a community, we have to stand up and say, we're proud, this is a great place to, come join us, but don't expect a whole lot of incentives on our part, because we're too good with incentives anymore. And now we really need to make them pay going forward.
Thank you so very much. Kathy? You go.
I would tend to agree with Ron. I don't think that big businesses should get a lot of incentives that little businesses don't get, and they get none, because more than half the people in this country work for smaller companies with less than 50 employees. So I really think that we need to be fair to all businesses and treat them all alike. So I don't like the idea of giving big companies an advantage over the smaller companies that belong to the people here in Longmont.
Thank you, candidates. I have your second lightning round question, and in any order, I will start, but here is the question first. Do you support the marijuana sales tax? We will start with Alex Semorin.
Thank you for that. I know that the marijuana sales tax will more than likely pass personally. I'm not a user, so whatever the people want, they can have.
Alright, so that was a bit ambiguous. So you know that it is, because you're gonna have to come down one way or the other, or the other, I'm gonna give you another opportunity to answer that particular question. Certainly, there are many, many people who support it, and there are many who do not. Do you support the marijuana sales tax if you want to certify yours?
Well, as I said, I'm not a user, so I would not support paying the tax, but if I'm not buying it, I'm not paying the tax anyway.
That's right, I was gonna say, you don't have to be a user to support it. I think a lot of people will see that it's good for schools, or good for whatever the money's being used for, for the greater good, but some would take issue with it, just as, you know, everyone has the right to do. I will go next to Ron Gaydos. Do you support the marijuana sales tax?
I do. I think it gives us an opportunity to manage the issue. I guess where I take exception to the council is I would take a rather free market approach, similar to what we do in terms of liquor licensing, and go in that approach. I think this approach is a little convoluted. I'm sorry.
Sorry about that. Fifteen seconds. Kathy Jarrett, what about you? Do you support the marijuana sales tax?
I do not. I plan to vote for the marijuana sales tax. I think it's encouraging more use of marijuana and having more shops, and we're supposed to have the tax so that we can use it for the problems that it's going to cause with more people using marijuana.
Time. Thank you, Kathy. Erin Madriaga, what do you say?
I do support the marijuana sales tax. It really only affects those folks who are buying marijuana, and it also seems to be a good middle-of-the-road compromise between other municipalities as far as how much tax is levied on marijuana sales within those municipalities.
Alright, and Holly, what do you say?
I certainly support it, because I'm the one who brought back the initiative to bring marijuana into the city. And I did this partly so that we would have a dedicated revenue stream for affordable housing, because we currently put it all in acts of taxpayers.
Alright, here is a question from the audience for the unlarged candidates. Thirty-second answer. Wind and utility scale solar are the two key sources for electric generation. Yet our power supplier, PRPA, gets 75% of its revenue from burning coal. What is your plan to transition to 100% clean renewable energy by 2030? We will start out with Kathy.
I think that solar panels are expensive, and I don't think that they're really all that practical. They wear out. I myself use passive solar in my house, and there's a difference between passive and active solar. I could go into that difference if you want to, but...
I mean, unless you can do it like that.
I don't think, I don't think it's practical to say we'll have 100% solar by 2030. I think it's impossible.
Alright, Erin Madriaga, what do you say?
Well, I say that the PRPA is working on and is continuing working on acquiring more resources to do renewable energy, be it wind, hydro, and solar. It should be a true partnership between the city and PRPA, as well as the other municipalities that are part of PRPA, in helping this become a thing, not just citywide, but statewide and along the front range of areas.
Alright, Alex Semorin, what's your response?
I think currently, I believe that we're at 32% renewable energy, and it's a great goal to have, to be total by 2030. I don't know how practical it is, but I know that everybody at Longmont Power Communications has dedicated it to making it happen. And as costs decrease for renewable energy, they will be buying more.
Thank you so very much. Holly, what do you say?
I certainly think it is possible. Norway and Iceland are... Norway and Iceland are already a hundred percent renewable, and they're whole countries. It requires political will. I believe that, I know that all renewables, and they're more than solar and wind, are currently much cheaper than coal, and I believe that if we just have the political will and keep supporting technology that moves us forward, we will get there.
Thank you. Ron Gallegos, your response?
If you don't try, if you don't pinch, you can't be in the game. So I think, you know, there's a difference between subscribing to a notion that we can't get there and really doing everything we can to plan how to get there. So I think we need to really err in that direction.
Alrighty. Thank you all. This is the final question before you all be giving your closing statements. And we will start this with, let's see, did I start with Alex? I think we start, I think we start with Alex, I think we start with Erin. So I'll start with that. At this time, Alex, there are several affordable housing apartment projects in the works in Longmont. What can city council do to encourage different types of affordable housing solutions?
I believe in public-private partnerships, and the way to get more affordable housing is to work closely with the developers and incent them, not by giving them money necessarily, but by, as this was discussed earlier, by providing incentives for maybe going higher or greater density to be able to accomplish the goal that we need. I was recently at the Affordable Housing Summit, and I was glad to see that the communities are coming together to discuss how best to solve that problem. In the past, it's always just been laid on the backs of developers, and as was mentioned before, we always gave up an out by giving us cash and blew up. Now that cash was used to support Longmont Housing Authority, Thistle, and others, but still we didn't get the product that we needed.
Alright, thank you so much. And of course, Polly, what do you say about this challenge of affordable housing? How would you work within the city of Longmont to alleviate the challenge, and what kind of different options for housing would you provide?
First of all, I think we need to solicit developers who actually do build affordable housing, instead of continuing to have the same developers who specialize in standard market rate housing. The people who specialize in it actually know how to do it more efficiently. Secondly, I would restore the inclusionary housing, which is what got us twice the housing, twice the affordable housing that we have now. Now we have not much. And third, I would explore other options like modular housing, the city buying land and having experimental housing for things like tiny housing, which is one other method of providing housing for people who already build their own houses, and modular housing, which is an up and coming way that we're going to be doing housing.
Alright, thank you Polly. Ron, what do you say to the challenges of affordable housing? What different types of affordable housing would you suggest?
Well, historically, in this area, we've gone out and not out. We have to seriously think about really beginning to build taller buildings, going up. I think we also need to talk about amending our land use regulations to allow for mini housing for infill, for mother-in-law apartments, and also to change who you can rent your basement to and whatnot. I think that's an alternative. I was recently reading an article in The Atlantic and it was talking about this history of boarding houses. Someplace, two hundred years ago in this country, the notion that we would have public houses or boarding houses or, you know, those kinds of things went away, and everybody was entitled to have their own house. It's sort of like everybody's now entitled to have their own SUV and whatnot, and then we talk about the pollution problem. So I need, we need to really rethink the issue, which means that more flexible land use and going up instead of out.
Thank you Ron. Kathy, what do you say?
I would agree quite a bit with Polly and Ron on having more various types of housing allowed and encouraged, and not require various sizes and types of houses, including the mother-in-law apartments, small apartments, tiny houses for people who would like to have that. Actually, when I was a graduate student, I lived in a tiny apartment, long, gold before it was popular, about two hundred and fifty square feet, in an older house in Longmont that had been divided up into apartments. I know of a friend who lived in a small house behind another house. I think those kinds of things, as well as allowing more vertical development, and just other things that whatever the developers can come up with. I know they have container houses and modular houses. I think we need to allow more types of houses in Longmont.
Thank you Kathy Jarrett. Next we have Erin Rodriguez. What do you say Erin?
Well, I think as you heard, it's a multifaceted problem, and we have to deal with it, and we have to deal with it from multiple ways. As far as affordable housing, being housing that is specifically restricted by income level, I think Longmont's actually doing a lot of good things, and it's continuing to propose other good things, such as half of the proposed marijuana tax go into affordable housing. I want to talk a little bit about the gap between what's currently the first step in market rate housing and affordable housing that is restricted by income. There's a big gap there of people who do not qualify for affordable housing, yet are still continuously priced out of the market for market rate housing. And the solutions to some of these issues are definitely square footage, smaller properties cost less money, as well as not putting in the absolutely highest amenities. We don't need granite, we don't need extensive arbor flooring in every single house that we construct. We could have starter homes with linoleum for my good, not top-of-the-line stainless steel appliances.
Thank you so much, Alex. And yes?
Could I clarify something?
Oh, absolutely. Thirty seconds to clarify, please put that on the clock. Polly would like to clarify.
We already do have, last year, the city council passed many incentives to developers, but we also did, among those incentives, were expediting affordable housing if it had greater density and greater verticality. So we already are doing those things. It's not getting us as much as it should, but we've done those things.
Yeah, certainly it's a challenge everywhere. I mean, I was reading, what is it, eighty-seven percent of what's considered a starter property, eighty-seven percent of that inventory is already priced out, so there isn't much left. So certainly it's an issue, not just here, but across the nation. It is time now for the closing remarks, your closing statements. And of course, I will call your name in random order, and you will have one minute to give your closing remarks. We'll start out with Alex Semore.
Experience matters, especially when you're making decisions that can affect the life of many over a long period of time. In the twenty years that I've been involved in the community, I have demonstrated strong leadership in the public, private, and nonprofit sectors. I'm an entrepreneur at heart. I ran the incubator here in town for ten years, where we recruited startup technology companies. We had over seventy of them in the incubator over the ten years. Many are still here in town employing people. I also started my own company here in town and had local employees. I've served on council, I've served on multiple boards within the community, I've chaired many of the boards, and I've received numerous awards for my leadership. One of them, the Tom Brock Award, which is presented to outstanding leadership in continuing the Tom Brock legacy, which is economic development.
Thank you, Mr. Semore. The next closing statement you'll hear will be from Kathy Jarrett.
Longmont has grown from a small town based on agriculture to a thriving city of about ninety-five thousand people. The growth will continue. We don't need to fear it, but we do need to prepare for it. We need to provide a safe and reliable water supply, maintain our infrastructure, and offer a balance of transportation options. Our city policies need to encourage both large and small businesses, as well as have housing options that people of various income levels can afford. There will be difficult decisions to be made. We will probably never agree on every decision, but with respect for each other, we can weigh all the options and make the best possible decisions. Please check out Kathy Jarrett, I'm sorry, Jarrett for City Council on Facebook and jarrettscitycouncil.com on the internet. I would appreciate your vote, and thank you for your time and attention.
Alright, ladies and gentlemen, Kathy Jarrett. Next we will have Polly Christensen.
Longmont City Council is supposed to be a nonpartisan board, yet that's not the way it has worked in the last thirty years I've lived here. We need to move forward to a truly representative democracy for Longmont. We must make decisions based on the traditional American values of common sense, fiscal responsibility, economic opportunity for all, civil rights and justice, and environmental responsibility. We need a functioning government that represents all the citizens of the town and solves problems with decisions based upon analysis and research of the problems, our constitutional rights and community values, and listening to all our citizens. Decisions should never be based upon business buddies, paid lobbyists, religion, or political dialogue. My name is Polly Christensen, I'm asking for your vote to continue to serve you. Together we can continue to fight against what's wrong and fight for what's right.
I know most Longmont, I know the difference.
Thank you. Next, Ron Gallegos.
Why should you vote for me? I have a wealth of experience having previously served in office. I have a proven track record with accomplishments. I was on the council to build the rec center, the museum, the senior center, expansion, the purchase of Sandstone Ranch, and the implementation of the fiber optic backbone. I have a plan that has to do with economic development, be it jobs, be it tourism. We need to take advantage of our location near the Rocky Mountain National Park, and we need to build a river walk similar to what they have in Cuauhtémoc or San Antonio. We need to restructure downtown from Third and Ninth Avenues, turning it into a pedestrian plaza, so that it has shops, and restaurants, and bars, and grills akin to what they have in Spain. Finally, I believe I have the passion to be a good leader and be a good team member. I thank you for your time and ask for your vote and support on me. Thank you.
Ron Gallegos, your answer. And finally, Erin Rodriguez.
Thank you very much. Well, friends, I think we can all admit that we actually do live in a pretty wonderful city, and that many of us have very, very, I guess we would say, slim differences in our approaches to what we would do for the city. What I would ask of you though is, it's probably time for us to start looking at the next generation of leadership. We should start looking not just to get people more active, but to also inspire them to be active and to run for office, be involved with our boards and commissions, and be involved with our city, because they eventually will inherit this wonderful city, and we need them to know how things are done here, and done in a right and nonpartisan and very collegial way. And I'd just like to leave you with a quote from Martin Gay. I'm actually going to paraphrase it for you. Ain't no mountain high enough to keep me from working for you. Roll with Rodriguez.
Ladies and gentlemen, all our fellow Longmonters, please. Thank you. And Kathy too. Our seventh speaker, Kathy, for at-large, and we will have a very brief intermission and bring out the big girl. Thank you all. Oh, okay, good. I like that. Thank you, thank you. Appreciate that. Perfect, thanks, guys.
You guys are dogging.
We're doing everything. You're live now, just saying now.
Aren't you tiring?
Oh. It's okay. Just be aware. Did you hear us ask? Did you even hear us ask? Well, we asked them. Yes, that's right. We did. What? No, that'd be great. Did we what? Ask for money. On the website. Oh, on the website, website. This is working great. Yeah. I think I'm going to put it in automatic mode for the person. I'm going to go see if there's any food left. Do you want me to bring anything? No.
Ladies and gentlemen, can I get you to take your seats? We're about to start my second segment. Or the third segment, excuse me. I'm going to go ahead and just...
Thank you.
Good? Good.
Thank you so much.
So next you will be hearing from the mayoral candidates in our last segment this evening. I want you to please help me in welcoming Brian Batley, Roger Lang, and Sarah Levinson. and Sarah Levinson. I will repeat the rules to make sure everyone is understanding what they are. Candidates, I want you to pay attention closely to those lights right there in front of the stage. The green light will be lit as you begin speaking. The yellow light means you have fifteen seconds to complete your answer, and the red light means, honey, it is over. Done. Period. So each of you will have a minute and a half for an introductory statement. Okay? And then at the end of that segment, you will have one minute for closing remarks. I promise. I would like to give that opening introductory statement. Now, I will ask the questions, and of course, you will have one minute to respond to those questions. We'll rotate questions, so each candidate has the opportunity to answer first. The candidate answering the question first will also be given thirty seconds at the end to respond, if in fact I see it's used in my discretion again, thirty seconds for the candidate to either answer or rebut or to clarify, to make sure that that is good to go. Now, of course, if time permits, I will read a question from the audience, and the same time rules will apply. There will also be a lightning round questions, and you will get fifteen seconds to give your answer to those questions. And I'll reiterate the timing at the beginning of those segments. So are you ready?
Ready.
Good deal. So let's get started with the opening statements in random order. We will start with Roger Lang.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Roger Lang. I'm a mayoral candidate, candidate for this election. Jackie, my wife and I have lived in Longmont for forty years. The reason we moved here and the reason we continue to live here is the quality of life in this community, which I think most of you agree with, that aspect of Longmont. I have some concerns about what's happening to some aspects of our quality of life I'd like to just elaborate a little bit on. Affordability is something that's getting a lot of attention. I think that our housing situation was discussed quite a bit earlier, but the affordability is driving a lot of our workers out of our community onto other communities that are a little easier to afford in Longmont. These people may be first responders, teachers. I want those people to be able to work in Long and live in Longmont, not just work in Longmont. So we need to address affordability. I think we have a lack of it. It's been discussed quite a bit before. Secondly, just an item of living in Longmont, the affordability of paying for utilities is another issue that I think needs some attention. We'll talk about that hopefully later, but the utility bills in Longmont are getting higher and water is one of them. So tonight, we have a lot of issues that have been talked about. We have three ballot questions that I hope you've all read and understand, and thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you. I'd love to know who next to have Sarah Levinson.
Thank you. My name's Sarah Levinson, and I'm running for mayor because I want to help guide our city into the last phase of its development, to become a city of over a hundred thousand people. I believe that as we become a big city, we can honor our proud heritage and humble roots as a community built by farmers, temperance pioneers, bankers, merchants, laborers, and entrepreneurs. In our beginnings, our city had folks who came from across the country, from Europe, along with the ancestors of Native Americans and the Spanish descendants of families who had settled Colorado hundreds of years before. We've been blessed by great planning by past leaders. They had the vision of a city where residents could depend on their electricity and water and have an adequate supply, not only for today, but for the future. They also regarded the buildings of the city's original square mile as an example of town planning, where there was a variety of housing and commercial buildings. I want to serve as mayor so that I can lead the conversation about what our city will become. We don't have vast open fields to build on, as in the past, so we need to engage in productive discussions to plan the city we desire. We don't have unlimited natural resources either. We need to plan for growth that can sustain itself. I'm also running for mayor that I can uphold the promise of our past, that future generations and families will have the same opportunity to learn, work, raise a family, and serve the community as my family does today.
Thank you so very much, Sarah Levinson. And finally, we have Brian Badley.
Thank you, Gloria. My name is Brian Badley. Most of the people in the room probably know who the three of us are, because the people here are the ones who read the paper, get engaged in local elections, and love this city. I've served on city council for the last six years. I have served as Longmont's mayor pro temp for the last four. And I'm really nervous tonight. I've done this debate two times, and I don't say that as an excuse. I just realized that there's a lot of responsibility that comes to the position of being mayor of Longmont. And partly I'm nervous because all these signs around town that say Badley for mayor, and you just realize that it's not Ivan who is running. And because, you know, my wife, she's the true public servant in our family. But she's here tonight, along with our three little boys. We've also got a daughter off of college. But there's Mikey, Ogie, and Jordan here supporting their dad. And that is the reason, those four people in this room right now, including Danny who's off in Hawaii, they are the reason why I'm running for mayor. I would like to be mayor because I live in this town. My wife and I, a few years back, we decided, well, where do you want to live? And we said, why would we want to live anywhere else? And so we planted roots. We're gonna retire in this town. Hopefully, my children and those three boys are going to someday start families in this town. So my motives are pure. I love Longmont, and I'm looking forward to the rest of the debate where we can get into the issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian Badley, Gloria. Thank you to our candidates. Now, to ask the first question this evening in this mayoral race, I want you to help me welcome Audrey DeBarres, with Commuting Solutions and 2017 Chamber of Public Policy sponsor. She is going to bring the first question to Brian. Welcome. That's welcome.
The chief financial officer of RTD recently spoke at a Commuting Solutions membership meeting regarding the draft strategic business plan for 2018 to 2023, which describes anticipated income and expenses for both base system operations and the fast tracks capital construction and operations. We learned RTD is no longer able to commit to completing Northwest Rail by 2040. We also learned they may not keep thirty million dollars identified for bus rapid transit on Highway 119 in the plan, which was intended to serve as matching funds for other state and federal funding to construct the project. If you were mayor of Longmont, what steps would you take to address this major funding issue to provide transit connectivity to Longmont?
Thank you. Well, this has been an issue that's been ongoing. Over the last six years, I've heard this issue. We haven't dealt with it yet because we continue to have other pressing problems. We've got nine hundred employees in this town. We've got a budget of approximately four hundred million, give or take, ten or twenty million. And we're facing things like people coming in and wanting to frack in Longmont, which I'm against. People who want to come in and build housing that's unaffordable, which I think we need a reasonable approach. So we just haven't had a chance to get there yet. However, as of 2004, the people of Colorado spoke, and we decided that we were going to be part of the fast track project. Point six of every sales tax sent, point six percent of every set that we generate sales tax goes to RTD. Point four percent goes to fast track. What we need to do is write letters, petition, show up to the meetings. Although that's difficult because they're on Tuesdays. And we need to continue to schmooze until they realize that they need to give us our train. And if that fails, they do not comply with the law, and we need to bring legal action. I'm ready.
And so now you... Now we move on to the next particular individual, and let's... Pleasure, Gloria. Let's give Audrey a round of applause. Thank you. And so the next individual we have is Roger... Sarah. No, I think it's Roger.
Roger Lang.
Try to go in the order that is put forth here. So yes, that would be Roger. Please, give your response.
Well, we've heard a lot about fast tracks, actually. My position on fast tracks is to try and get a train from Denver through Boulder to Longmont. I don't think it's very practical to work a train in conjunction with Burlington Northern and try to use the same track bed. I just don't think it's very feasible. My suggestion would be, as Maynard mentioned earlier, is to go out to I-25. If you have ever driven I-25 lately, which I'm sure all of you have, there's where the congestion is. There is where the need for rapid transit is, whether it's a light rail, while a train are there. And it wouldn't bother me to bus out to Delphina and catch a train at that point. I just don't think it's gonna happen through Boulder. And as far as bus rapid transit, I think RTD ought to make that happen for us on 119 so we have a good communication, like each over to Boulder, because a lot of people go that way. But my position is I would never get into a legal situation with them. I want to do something practical.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Roger. Thank you.
Well, RTD stands for Regional Transportation District. Well, it may be regional. There's not much transportation, and the district is very loose. I think that things have changed since the vote in 2004. I agree with Roger on this point. However, without changing and having another vote of the people, we really can't change things. So let's look at what's practical. What I learned from sitting next to council members and mayors from Longtree and Centennial is that RTD understands and is attracted to bright, shiny objects, i.e. cash. What happened to get mayor services from RTD is their Chamber of Commerce and their communities raised money, and they got matching funds so that RTD could not ignore them. I think if we really want to look at rail coming here, we have increased costs for the use of the tracks. From Burlington Northern to Santa Fe, there are several strategies we could employ, and other strategies as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Audrey. Appreciate it. Audrey, that's a celebration, totally. Excuse me, I said sorry. So Audrey, give her a round of applause. I'm sorry. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, so the question that is... Certainly, that is one of the questions, but this Amazon effect question, many, many people have been asking this particular question. Because the Amazon effect is the notion that online commerce is threatening retail jobs and local sales taxes, and even mom and pop shops. How would you deal with this Amazon effect proactively? And we will start out this particular case with Sarah.
Thank you. Well, I think that we can tell by just the numbers that the days of sales tax being a reliable inconsistent revenue source for cities is probably hitting the twilight. I don't know. Raise your hands. How many people got a package delivery that you didn't pay sales tax on last week? Okay. So a couple of ways to approach this. We can look at what the state is going to be able to do to collect sales tax by asking people to pay it when they pay their income tax. I'm not sure whether or not we can employ a campaign in Longmont to do the same, but I think we have to address, what do we do when sales tax is no longer a real revenue source? And I guess I can give you the short answer here is that maybe we need to look at a different taxing structure and look at diminishing the sales tax and replacing it with something else.
Thank you, Sarah. Sarah Levinson, ladies and gentlemen. And so when we think about the Amazon effect, Brian, you think about the notion that online commerce, of course, technology advances, and you think, this is great, I can point a click, I don't have to go to the store, but there's a downside to that in many ways. Does it threaten the retail jobs, local sales taxes? When you start talking about even mom and pop businesses, how would you deal with what's being called the Amazon effect?
You know what? This is a great question, because it relates to our mall. We've been dealing with it already. The big complaint you hear about the mall, which is not a mall, by the way, is that, my gosh, there are no... Well, we don't have a department store. It's food court. There's no retail there. But we do have retail, just not sexy retail. We do have food service. It's just not all that sexy. We had a dying mall here in Longmont. It was bringing in no sales tax revenue because of the Amazon effect, because of the decrepit, decaying building, many reasons. City council, six years ago, started the process of courting developers to come in and basically remove our old mall and put in, not a new mall, but put in retail space, Vision Places, Verizon Telephone Stores, liquor store, dog food, pet shop, or pet food store, in order to basically avoid this Amazon effect. Most people don't buy online the things you find in Village of Peas.
Thank you. Appreciate it. What did you say about that, Gloria? This relates to the Amazon effect, the notion that commerce is threatening retail jobs and sales taxes, and what that is used for.
As far as I'm concerned, this is a federal issue. I think from a federal standpoint, they dabbled with it, but they haven't actually taken any action. We ought to get a cut of internet sales to the cities because it's very tough on the cities, the way this is going. We can work some deals on a state level with big individuals like Amazon to give us a cut of some of their tax and sales that they do online. But as far as I'm concerned, it only has to... The only way it's gonna be solved is if we can participate in some of the profit they get. And whether it's done on a state level individually with big companies, or federally, finally, have somebody decide that the cities need to get the sales tax that's been taken away from them. I think that's the only solution.
Roger Lang, ladies and gentlemen. Absolutely. Sarah Levinson has a revote. She left. You have thirty seconds. Go ahead.
Thank you. I'm glad Roger mentioned the federal level. When I was serving on various national cities committees, including the Finance Administrative and Intergovernmental Relations Committee, which I did chair one year, we were constantly advocating through that membership organization for legislation at the federal level to have parity in for a national system of collecting local sales tax. The technology as far as knowing what a local sales tax rate is, is already in place.
Thank you. Thank you to the candidates. We're gonna move on to question three. With the choice of diverse range of housing options, should we be proactive in welcoming all those who want to live in Longmont? Should the city take proactive measures to ensure affordable and a diverse range of housing options, or should we let the market dictate supply and demand? We'll start out with Roger.
If you're gonna effectively attack or impact affordable housing and accommodate those people that can't afford market rate housing, you've gotta do something and just let the market decide what the result is. I think we ought to more aggressively talk to our developers as they come into town and work to some solutions where in fact they do provide some affordability in anything they build. For the last few years, we've had over thirteen hundred units being built in Longmont, all of them at market rate. We didn't get anything out of those people to get the affordability. So what I'm saying is I think we ask for affordability as we build, and possibly as a city, we aggressively go after affordability in other ways, other ways other than just working with the developers.
All right. Thank you so much. Thank you, Roger. What did you say, Sarah Levinson?
Well, I think there are several parts to this question. First of all, I want to point out that in past councils, in fact, the council during the last building boom we had in the early 2000s was the council that put the inclusionary zoning policy in place with either cash in lieu or ten percent of housing being built in the development to be targeted at the affordable level for rental or for purchase. I support that. I also think that it might be time to bring it back in Longmont. There are affordable housing inclusionary zoning policies implemented in large cities like Philadelphia that are actually working and not hurting the free market. The other part that we can look at is some regulatory issues, which have been addressed at the state with the condo and multifamily housing defects law. Third thing is we can look at community land trusts, where we separate the value of the land from the structures. Look at innovative building techniques that cut down on cost.
Thank you. Thank you, Sarah. And finally, we have Brian Badley. What did you say, Brian?
Thank you, Gloria. I'm against inclusionary zoning, simply because if somebody came to my law firm and said, you've got to provide ten percent of all your revenues to your clients... "You've got to provide 10% of all your revenues to your clients," I wouldn't be in business. You can't just assume that the developer or any industry is going to make money, therefore just go ahead and strap on this problem to that particular sector of our community. But campaign time is always interesting, because we talk about, we need to do this. Well, just like the Amazon effect, at least the last two councils I've been part of have been dealing with this. There's two sides to this issue. One is the free market, well, what will houses cost? What's the average cost of a house in Longmont? And the better Longmont becomes, and the prettier it is, and the better our rec centers, and the better our streets, the more people want to live here, and the more expensive housing will become. Over here, it's subsidized housing, and we already have a plan. We just passed it just a few weeks ago. $1 million without raising taxes out of the general budget go to creating 100 units a year. We leverage state and federal dollars, and we'll have 10% of our housing stock by 2035 subsidized. We've got a solution. We're working on it. We might even go to 12%.
Okay, and I am going to follow up with you. So if you look at, because 100 units a year for housing sounds really good, but if you look at the number of people who are moving, whether it is Longmont or just other cities, look at that supply and demand as far as the people who are coming there, is it meeting the needs? It's one thing to say it on paper. It's something else when you are dealing with human capital, if people are standing there, maybe 200 people who will be there. Are you saying that those who at one time could afford housing in Longmont now being priced out, is this just not the place for them? Do we just keep moving these people? Because that can't be a sustainable plan either.
This is a sad fact of reality. So I taught up to lead school for three years. I spent a decade working with very successful CEOs and executives to start in anyway. But as long as you are selling homes below market, you will never meet demand. And I don't think it's wrong to say, you got to do what I did. I don't live in Boulder, because I came to Longmont, because I could afford Longmont. I came here in 1999, and me and my wife and our family, we fought to make Longmont a great town. And I will continue fighting to make Longmont a great town. And I hope we can make room for as many people as possible, but there's not enough room for everyone who wants to be here, unfortunately.
Thank you. Thank you all. Thank you so very much. 15 seconds to respond to this. At the end of your term, what is one issue that you would like to see resolved due to your time on council? I'm going to start with Sarah.
Well, I'm going to talk about a crisis that most people in this room with gray hair may not have realized. There's a childcare crisis in the city. We talk about affordable housing. Let's look at affordable childcare. Let's bring that issue forward as I did when I ran for mayor in 2015.
All right. Next, we have Roger Lang. What do you say?
I would revert back to something we used when I was on city council, and that was measuring quality of life, benchmarks, school capacity, crime, what have you. I would like to be able to have us track where we're going and be able to look at our deficiencies so we can target for which correct things and leave other things that are working well alone.
Okay. Thank you. Brian, what do you say? At the end of your term, what is one issue that you would like to see resolved due to your time on council?
Well, the mayor only served two years, and I think this issue we have to deal with quickly. We've got an emerging problem of homeless and the transits in our community. We've got 50 camps along St. Brane, and we've got 150 homeless individuals, more or less. We need to work with HOPE and the Hour Center to figure out a way to get them off the street and make sure that these travelers don't come into our town using our system.
All right. Thank you. Thank you to you all. This year, there are three ballot questions that will raise taxes on water rates, basically. How important is it to you to consider the overall tax, the fee burden, to residents when considering new ballot questions? And we will start this one out with Brian.
Thank you. Federal government gave us an unfunded mandate to enhance our water quality treatment plan. Previous councils failed to upkeep our sewer, which means we have to come up with $200 million to fix that. That's the big increase in our rates. And we need to be the ant, not the grasshopper, when we're preparing for our future. And we need to, we need to do Windy Gap, and we need to 10,000 acre feet.
All right. Roger, what do you say with that question?
I think it's a great question, and I have advocated for having chimney hall filled with 6,000 acre feet. That's what the staff recommended. If you want to buy more, you pay more. We all pay more. And I'm saying we ought to put the burden on the taxpayers and the ratepayers to a quantity that's adequate for our buildout. And I am advocating for 6,000 acre feet. So we don't put a larger burden on the ratepayers with our situation.
All right. And finally, Sarah, this year, there are three ballot questions that will raise taxes on water rates. How important is it to you to consider the overall tax or fee burden to residents when considering new ballot questions?
Well, somewhat goes back to the affordable housing issue. If we don't keep a governor on our utility rates, people that can afford to be in a home right now are going to end up not being able to afford their utility bills. I agree with Roger that we need to look at a reasonable rate from our water furbing project, Windy Gap. Now, I'll also point out that originally, even a couple of years ago, we referred to the 12,000 acre feet mark. Recently, it went down to 10,000. So I think that the recommendation of staff, and also what's in our new sustainability plan that was adopted last year, we can survive and grow on 6,000 acre feet. I'll also point out that the city of Denver has seen explosive population growth. They're in fact using less water per person than they used to use in past years because of conservation and different ways that people are not watering grass.
Thank you. Thank you. As the Denver metro and Boulder County areas continue to grow, we talked a lot tonight about growth. What unique Longmont characteristics do you believe we should preserve to keep a positive identity? We'll start out with Roger first.
Well, I mentioned previously that the quality of life in Longmont is why we're all here, frankly. And I think what we ought to do is understand exactly what's happening to our quality of life in different areas and be able to measure. And so that we have the ability to look at what's going on, track it, and make corrections when something's going wrong. My thrust would be to keep the quality of life, whatever aspect we're talking about, at the levels that we all expect and have experienced in the past. And that, I think, would be the most important thing that we could do to continue to have the quality of the community that we have today.
All right, Mr. Lang, thank you so very much. Next up, we have Sarah Levinson. What do you say?
Well, to keep Longmont's positive identity, I think we have to identify what those factors are. First of all, we're a very welcoming community. When my husband and I were looking for our property that we bought in Old Town over 20 years ago, people actually invited us onto their front porch for a glass of iced tea. That would have been unheard of in most other communities. The family-friendly aspect of it, the fact that Longmont has always been a town where one person can still make a difference. We also have a great diversity of cultures and languages spoken in town. We have a lot of Latinos in our community who have been here many, many decades and generations, and I think that adds to our positive identity. I also think that we have a really good city to be able to be successful. Lots of opportunity for people. If you're willing to get out there and work hard, and you can be a successful businessperson, a successful public servant, and also have a successful family life.
Thank you, Ms. Levinson.
Thank you, Gloria. Well, we just, council recently adopted this plan called Vision Longmont. We actually take a total health approach. We look at multimodal transportation, health and wellness, parks, trails, and recreation, the overall economy, sustainability and resiliency, our housing needs, affordable housing needs, our utilities and utility rates, and public safety. I don't think in order to maintain our quality of life, we can do more than one thing. But there was something we did recently that goes a long way. First of all, council passed a, we have an ordinance in place that says we're not going to sell water to frackers. What that means is that our water resources, whether it be now or through Windy Gap or whatever, will not be sold to frackers. We also will not sell water to our neighbors who want to build on our doorstep. And then last but not least, we're preserving our open space by partnering with Boulder County, US Department of Wildlife, in order to make it so that future councils want to sell our open space they can't, because the other partner presumably just won't let them.
Thank you. Thank you, Brian. Thank you. Appreciate it. To our candidates, we'll move on to this lightning round question. We'll have one more question before you all give your closing statements. So here is your lightning round question, and you will have 15 seconds to respond. Who is your favorite political leader not alive to dead? Let's start with Sarah Levinson.
Jane Jacobs. Jane Jacobs fought Robert Moses in New York City to preserve neighborhoods, to preserve places that were special, such as Washington Square, that's still thriving today. She was a visionary. She believed that neighborhoods and the voices of common people should be heard in development.
Thank you. Thank you, Sarah. Roger, what do you say, Mr. Lang? Who is your favorite political leader not alive to dead?
Well, I'll have to go to a national leader, I think. Lincoln is my favorite leader. You may say that he's not exactly local, but I think he's had a great example for all of us. He was a man that looked at all sides of the issues, looked at all incomes and types of people, and he was a very fair and well-balanced individual, and I have a lot of respect for him. He's good.
Thank you. Thank you. And then finally, Mr. Doug. Brian, tell us, who is your favorite political leader not alive to dead?
This is going to be weird. Doug Brown. Doug Brown was my city councilman, and part of the reason I decided to first run for city council. He'd knock doors, he'd answer my calls, and he was smart, bleeding heart in a world, but smart. And just really admire and appreciate what he did for this community.
Thank you. Thank you to you all. And the final question before you give your closing statements. And we'll start it with Sarah. So the St. Brane blueprint is a current city project to wind the St. Brane River for flood mitigation. As this project progresses, do you believe the river should remain natural to, you know, basically serve a wildlife corridor? Or should portions of the river be developed to provide business opportunities such as shops and restaurants? Sarah, what do you say?
I think there are some viable goals to keeping the river natural. Other candidates have referenced Puobllo, which I've visited their Riverwalk. I lived in San Antonio for a few years and enjoyed all the amenities of a channelized cement river, the Riverwalk in San Antonio. I think that you could maybe get a balance between both having a natural corridor and some development, as long as having the natural corridor is not too impacted by the development. That St. Brane corridor is very important for wildlife and to keep, again, the positive identity of Longmont, which means we preserve and respect the animals and the wildlife that we have in our city already. I really think that going forward, we have to look at what hybrid of a plant meets the needs of our natural environment, and also having some limited development where it makes sense.
Thank you. Brian Lang, what do you say to that?
Thank you. We are not doing the St. Brane corridor for economic development purposes. I believe everyone here, if you lived in Longmont back in September of 2013, you remember what happened. Our town was literally cut in two. And the reason why we're doing the St. Brane corridor, the project now, is because we need to make sure if a 100-year flood, 500-year, if a 500-year flood comes again, that our residents' lives, their health, their safety, our property are protected. Now, that gives a great excuse to move the river corridor. We have to. We're working with the Army Corps of Engineers to keep us safe. At the same time, we're looking at ways to utilize this opportunity. And I'm a big believer in the genius of the ant. We don't have to choose one or the other. We don't have to have a natural river corridor or economic development. I believe you can have both. And that statement actually sums up pretty much my political ideology, a balance of genius of the ant, so to speak.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Brian Lang, what do you say?
Well, I think the St. Brane River is one of our natural treasures in Longmont. And I think we've got to be very careful how we develop it and what we do with it. And we do need to develop it in a way that protects certain flood situations. But as far as economic development or retail development, unless it enhances the river corridor, not purely economically, I would not have a problem with it, but I think we've got to be very careful how we balance the two entities. And I'm not saying no to any development from an economic standpoint, but as long as it enhances the corridor and it's very sparingly done, I don't want to do anything that disrupts what we have down there naturally and impacts our wildlife or anything else that's going on in our corridor. So we've got to be careful how we develop it.
Thank you so much. The question of the candidates, we will end the segment with each candidate giving their closing statement in random order. We'll start out with Sarah Levinson.
Thank you. I want to thank not only the Chamber of Commerce, but all the many partners on the program that have contributed to making this evening a success. In my opening statement, I talked about how our past and our leaders in the past have set the course for the city we see today. Let's talk about our future city. As in the past, people from different countries and professions settled our city and contributed to its growth. We have to keep our doors open to everyone who wants to put their state in Longmont as their hometown. We have to find common ground to move forward. This means we sit down together to solve our problems. When I served eight years on council, I was one of those people who sat down with everybody, including people that I knew that didn't agree with me. I see a future where developers of the last unbuilt parcels can sit and share their vision with neighborhoods. Both will be able to hear what the other is saying, and each will listen. As a result, we will have a great city.
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you.
First of all, just a quick thank you, Gloria Neal. Thank you very much. Also to Channel Eight, the Chamber of Commerce, Silver Creek, Carrie Adams, Leadership Academy, and anyone else who helped for tonight. But essentially, this is a job interview. This reminds me so much of when I worked, and I'm hiring a attorney or paralegal or whatever, and I'm sitting in a chair. I'm essentially coming to you, the Longmont voters, and I'm saying, "I've worked for you for six years. I think I've done a great job." Not a good job. I could do better. I could all do better. "But I've tried to do a great job. I've tried to listen to everybody." The people who are my most vocal opponents, who are not these two. By the way, even if I lose, it's great. They're both great people. I know them both. So Longmont's going to win no matter what. But I'm coming to you saying, "I'd like a slight pay increase and more responsibility." That's essentially what I meant. And you can look at me and say, "What are you going to do?" I want to do primarily three things. Foster a thriving economy, protect the city from heavy industry and fracking, and three, and not least, fix the affordable housing program, a program or problem, and work on our transits. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. As a former city councilman and mayor of this fine city, I firmly believe that I am the best person for this job in the critical years ahead. This election will have long-term impacts to US citizens and our community as well. As your mayor, I will listen to all residents and stakeholders aiming to accomplish what is in the long-term interest of our community. I have been in a leadership position all of my professional career, both nationally and internationally. My leadership style is to work in a collaborative manner through consensus building and cooperation. I will break stability to the city council meetings, unlike we have witnessed in the past, and I'm asking for your support in this endeavor and look forward to representing all of you to ensure a positive, sustainable future for the home we call Longmont. Thank you for your time and interest.
Definitely appreciating. That concludes our third and last segment for the 2017 City Council, hosted by the Longmont Area Chamber of Commerce and sponsored by Comcast, Community Solutions, Times Hall, and Silver Creek High School, of course, the Longmont Channel, and the Latino Chamber of Commerce. I want to thank all of you all for coming. Let's give our candidates all of their due thanks. Goodnight and peace to the rest of you. Thanks again. Thanks again.